...the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
And I guess we might as well stay standing because the first item of business is introduction. Chief Portman to the town on PD. The chief, can you come on up?
Sure.
We'd like to congratulate you.
Thank you.
First days of work. Hopefully have been uneventful.
Absolutely.
And the rest of the board.
Congratulations, welcome.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
And the wife is here.
Yes, Sharon.
Sharon is here and welcome aboard.
Thank you.
How are you? Any situations that we should be aware about so soon?
No.
That's great. And although it's Sunday, I did see the trucks were out. I'm always curious what's going on. What happened to drag the trucks out on a Sunday morning? But thank you. And everything's, I understand the personal policy meeting tomorrow afternoon. I just got a memo to sign off the final paperwork.
Great.
The first three days are for free anyway. I'll get you signed on.
Sounds good.
Thank you for coming in tonight.
Absolutely.
Tom, as you were the video and we'll move on.
Yeah, we're all welcome to stop there.
Thank you too.
Thank you.
And I mean, I have Todd Ford. Hi, here's Todd. Up there.
Yeah, I just want to introduce myself to the new Consul. My name is George Simborski. I'm a Consul in Southampton for six years representing county government. And Todd Ford is my executive director. And as a whole, our Consul is very pleased with the job Todd has done. He's turned county government into a real showpiece now. He's worked hard at it and he keeps on working hard. And I'll just introduce you to Todd. Todd, take over.
Great, thanks, George. You guys are very, I think that George is an active Consul representing the interests of Southampton and the council governments. I hand out a packet, here's a package up here. Here's the chairman's in the yellow folder on you. Just outlines some of the savings that the town of Southampton enjoys. Roughly about a quarter million dollars so far in fiscal year 13. And that's based on the purchases that you make through our various programs and services. Your annual dues to the loan for the Consul are just $4,500, so a pretty good return on your investment. Some of the programs that you participate in that are undergoing some changes are Hampshire Power. You get your electricity from Hampshire Power. Hampshire Power is our electricity supplier. It's the only local Massachusetts-based electricity supplier in the Commonwealth. So all the revenue that's generated through Hampshire Power is reinvested back into the community through our various programs and services. Historically, that program has had two main product types, a profit share and a real-time rate where you pay based on the real-time rate of electricity. What we've been seeing over the last winter and continuing this summer, and we do anticipate it to happen again this winter, the gas line constriction is coming out of Canada, has made some pretty hefty electricity spikes on a real-time basis in December, January, and February. And we are rolling out a fixed-price product that will allow a town to be able to budget more predictably their electricity costs. And that's going to be very competitively priced. And again, all that revenue stays local. So our sales team's going to be going out to the towns recommending that you probably get off that real-time rate for this coming winter at the very least, jump on a fixed-price product that we'll be offering for you. I'm glad to answer any additional detailed questions on that. In combination with that, we offer a product called Hampshire Solar, which is a way for towns and municipalities to buy net metering energy credits. That basically means that you can offset your electricity use through locally-produced solar electricity. And you can buy that offset at a 21% to 30% discount. So you really save double your electricity. And again, you're keeping that energy in that solar electricity generated from local establishments. We make sure we always deal with the local folks and make sure that that investment that you're making in electricity and solar is reinvested in the local economy. Some of the other things that have been changing, we are investing pretty heavily in our accounting program. I know you guys are sat with a town accountant, but just wanted to let you know that it continues to move forward if anything should ever change here. We just signed West Hampton on as our newest customer. We're also working hard on our Hampshire IT and Hampshire Cloud. Hampshire IT provides low-cost, regional-based, full IT support for four municipalities. So if you're ever in need of that, please contact us. We continue to sign on towns. We just signed on another town, Berkshire County. And every town that signs on, the rate drops. So the more towns sign on, the lower the rate gets. We're also working on the Hampshire Cloud. A lot of towns do not have servers or they find that their servers in the town become pretty expensive, especially to upkeep, provide buyer protection, data backup, email, et cetera, and then servers need to be replaced. Some people recommend every five years. Most towns do it every 10, but still, that's a very costly capital infrastructure to have it here replaced. By slowly moving your data backup, your email, and finally your applications and software to a cloud-based server system, you end up paying just a monthly fee for that access as opposed to those kind of confusing hits that you can get with the capital infrastructure. So we're working with the towns of Hadley and Chesterfield and Rowe and implementing the Hampshire Cloud. We have a nice pricing model for that. We're going to start letting towns join onto that on an ad hoc basis as they like. Usually they want to move their email over to data backup or certainly the applications and software to that. That will have long-term savings for municipalities. That's all I have for you. That's kind of the quick and dirty, but glad to answer any questions that you may have and programs that we have. And also glad to take suggestions on programs that you think we should have that can bring additional savings to you if you have a question. Did you have a question?
Did you?
Go ahead.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed on the right.
I was just interested in the grant research and writing. And could you tell me about that? And is, what is the rate that you would charge for us to do, for you to do that for us?
Yeah, so as anyone knows who tries to find a grant in the Commonwealth, there's no really good one site to go to to find grants. So for our member communities, we have a grant database that outlines all of the state, federal, and private foundation grants that are applicable to municipalities in Massachusetts. And so we can sit down with you and go with that list and see if there's any matches there for needs that you might have in the community. Then we also have access to a number of grant writers who can help bring that grant to fruition. The fee for that really can depend on the grant. Some are quite simple, some are more complicated, some take some more time. So you can have a fee that's kind of upfront to write the grant, and then there's grant administration fees that will be paid for out of the grant if you were successfully awarded. So it really depends on the grant writer and the scope of the grant and how complicated it is. Some, you know, some can be for $1,500, others are going to be more like $5,000.
But the return would be much more than $1,500?
Well, obviously, yeah. So the more complicated a grant, presumably the more money you're going after. Some grants are just complicated because they like complication, but others are, you know, more robust and you get more for the money and the time invested.
Thank you.
Is there any reason why you used to have a comparison when we tell you that market bill and power, is it comparison of Western Mass versus what we're doing in the local areas? I haven't seen that the last time.
Oh, I wasn't aware of that. So we're in the midst of a transition. So we had two consultants, we're consolidating that to one. All the changes that we made are going to save the Consul and our electricity customers about $78,000 in expenses. That it may be related to that because we're switching over all of our building, the kind of bathrooms, it may be related to that.
It was very helpful to see when it was up and down, it helped to figure. In the last three months, I haven't seen it. I always figured it was, I don't know what's going on, but the prior four months, Western Mass is a lot more beneficial. And just, I like to carry it over a 12-month period because you need to look at it as a 12-month period.
Right. I agree with you and.
If you can put that back in, that would be helpful.
You bet. So I agree with you. I believe you guys are on the real-time price. And again, I'm going to be recommending that before, we're going to have our fixed-price start December 1st, and I would recommend it to towns strong.
Did you have fixed price before?
No, we didn't.
No, I didn't have that. You had two.
Yeah, we had a profit share that we totally got rid of, and we had the real-time rate. Based on what we saw last winter, based on everything we hear from FERC and every other industry analyst, it's not going to be much different this winter. So there's no new capacity coming out of Canada, so we definitely recommend that towns look at our fixed-price product. Then you can set your electricity budget to 12 months, you're going to know exactly where to look for the rate is and you'll be clean. If and when the real-time rate becomes a cost saver again, we recommend that you switch back to that.
Is there a penalty clause for you? How long do you pay on the real-time rate?
We'd probably recommend you stay on a 12-month contract. Those are the best numbers we're seeing now. But we'll have a 12, an 18, and a 24 month.
We did realize a lot of, when we stapled that original project, we did realize several thousand dollars just on the water side. Towns doing a similar operation, but on the water side, you have heavier mortars and stuff. We did save serious money.
Yeah, three, four, five, six years ago, Consuls were saving a lot of money. As Quomito's rate and the bridge rates started falling, the price between real-time and the base rate shrunk and then last winter flipped. And that caused us to make all kinds of changes to make sure that we continue to bring the savings to you. In order to do that, we had to have a number of product types completed at fixed price, which is a lot more complicated than the sound software fixed price over a long term. So I thought we made the changes that we made so we could save the savings.
And one thing that I have on your office for a meeting was what is the status of that on highway purchases?
Yeah, so the 1% on highway purchases is still there, and we haven't heard too much feedback since then. Not all of the contracts are yet on the 1%, but as they move on to that, it will be the 1%. So you see some of that in.
Like in USA, all our contracts are 1%.
Well, some of them have a 2%, and then the highway ones have the 1%. Which brings me to my comment. Veronica, as we did away with county government, only have Hampshire Cop come back stronger and better than what we had before. Thank you. Lot of services now that we didn't before. And a lot of opportunities, especially with the focus on regionalization and the savings to regionalization. Anyone else?
I have one quick one. Regional solar. We much prefer the annuals coming in the fall.
Questions?
Uh, we even run that or even state. I see you still going to, I'll say procurement of solar proposals.
Yes, sir.
Part of our problem is with Todd on the land is either we have to deforest the whole area or we don't have enough open air. We've probably got blockaded on either landfills would be ideal, but they want us to cut back probably two feet if you have a prograin, but more sunlight uses sort of things that , you know, that's kind of, I don't know if your programs are different.
Yeah, so the town basically has two options, two broad options when looking at solar. You can either build it yourself or have someone build it for you on municipal property. So then we had that service with the municipal procurement for solar, which Eric Weiss was great. You run into site issues and you run, and then you have to negotiate the power purchase agreement, et cetera. If that works for some towns, that's a good way to go. The other way to do it is through the net metering energy credits, the Hampshire Solar Program. So you can get, you can bring the benefits of local solar to a municipality without having solar installed in the town. So through our deal, we have a partnership with Nexamp. It's all local solar, whether it's in, they have projects in Hadley, they have projects elsewhere. But basically, they need to sell those net metering energy credits to municipalities. We bring those savings to you and you get a discount on your electricity bill. So you end up buying less electricity from us because you're running the net metering energy credits. It really brings you pretty much apples-to-apples the same cost savings that you're going to get by installing solar in a municipality unless you just happen to be Greenfield or East Hampton and get that beautiful deal that they got four years ago. Those days are long though, I know, and you get that.
Now, who in your office has that?
Eric Weiss would handle that as well. Yeah, he'd be glad to talk you through it. You have a pamphlet in there on Hampshire Solar that roughly outlines the protocol. Something if you're interested in supporting local solar, seeing a pretty hefty discount on your electricity bill, I definitely recommend that. And you can have that and our fixed price, you know, in fact, they have to go together. What else? Thank you very much. Thank you very much. You're welcome. Appreciate your.
Thank you. Nice to meet you.
Sure.
Remember last week I said, "Good."
And now we're three minutes shy of. The only question I have, is that a Seagrove?
No.
Okay, so we're in the right form. Has everyone had, anyone or everyone had a chance to review the minutes that are attached?
Not all of them.
No?
Not all of them.
All right, then we want to put that off for another gene. Since they're loaded in, now you can take them home and you'll.
Yeah.
All right, so we'll table that for the next meeting if you hold those on this. You have a chance, they're in your machines, so now you can take them with you.
Okay.
Kind of awkward to kill two minutes. Oh, we got an election warrant. We have an election warrant for Tuesday, the 5th day of November 2013, from 7:00 to 8:00, 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM for the purposes of the cast of votes, special election for candidates representative in the general court for the second hem in Hampshire District. Do I have a motion assigned to the warrant?
Does a motion assign any special election warrant?
Second.
All in favor.
Hi.
Any names? Any extensions? I suppose we will handle the resignation and the working cap from.
Actually, it's assigned.
Oh, it's on either. What's the state of formula?
That's the Consul and agent state formula.
We'll have to talk about that. We have the PCF that's not working since our fire chief is not employed. Do I have a motion assigned?
Make a motion assign.
Second.
PCF?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Any names? Extension? I think the county has the pardon here. Yeah, the meeting tomorrow, especially the assignment. I have now the 6:50, so I will call the, no, I will call for the street hearing on Pleasant Street, J Street hearing. Do I have a copy of the notice? Right there. Is it street warden here? Do you know the comment? Close to be. Close to be. Have you joined in? Join here with the tree ward?
He gets hold here. He's holding here and we have to pull him. Seagrove, we have a joint here with Pleasant.
Yeah, but now this, do you change?
Public hearing required.
He was aware of it, he gave me all the information.
Is this meeting? Is this? Was something wrong? I thought it was Sidney.
Well, I looked at a couple of pages, the gentleman, Mr. Powell, was a figure. I read that. We're, I thought it was a combined hearing with the select board, even the tree ward. That's the public notice.
I know on Seagrove, planning board.
Planning board, that's the year law, yeah.
Where the planning board is, where the board is. Where the board is.
Yeah, it's not Seagrove, so planning board isn't involved. So I think it's tree warden and us, but that's, at least that seems to be what I have. Can you take a minute and go calling? Is it yours? Can you? Can you?
Yeah, we've done.
It's been a long time. Reggie goes and calls.
Doesn't have to be here. I don't see. Are you there? Yeah, I'm just saying, I don't think it happens. It doesn't have to be a special name, it'll be held on the same agenda that we have.
I'm sure you know, but we have to consider. We have 20, 40, 50, 60.
Did he have that?
I don't know what those differences make between the two. But the tree ward.
He's not here yet.
Yeah, he's moved, not come back. He's not in the paddock. Audio, back, I don't know. The film, I guess.
Charlie, yeah, Charlie, mind bringing us up the date on Gordon?
Okay. As you know, he moved out of town at the end of July. He was very efficient in sending letters, but he resigned from the Greenway Committee and the Conservation Committee. And I told him that he didn't have to resign from the Conservation based on his law.
Yes, yes, but.
He doesn't have to resign. And I believe this is the chapter of the law that is a big flaw. Look at all my issues. We'd like to keep law because he's a really efficient and trained-up member of the commission. And the issue is, can we have a non-resident on the commission? And I am allowed, that part of the, my understanding of the law, which I extracted from the Mass Conservation Commission, and it allows him to be a non-resident, serve, but they have that privilege in which if he replaces someone, you have to have someone else on the mission, he has to be a resident. So basically, I'm expressing a wish of conservation, we should have a full-time member, that's very valuable to us, to a lot of towns. And we'd rather have a full-time member than an associate.
So the question you, Consul, can you, not accept his letter of resignation that's already been?
Basically, he came in and scratched his name off the Conservation Commission, so he put his initials, you know, I mean, had ruled that. So he has to be reappointed as a non-resident.
That takes a month. I understand he can serve out, he can serve out his term.
Yeah.
But now he could actually.
That would be a problem.
Putting him back into a position that he resigned from. If he hadn't resigned, there would be no cause.
I wouldn't be here.
Anybody?
When is his term?
I think it's another two years.
Two years. He had two years to go on, is a good thing.
I think so, yes.
So the simpler problem would be if he had never resigned, it would be not an issue.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Problem.
Very efficient.
The problem is, he did resign, so now we're reappointing him.
That's basically, yeah.
Well, once the consensus is reformed.
I think the board would appreciate you staying long. We haven't discussed this fully in the meeting, but I think that's the case. Mala, would you, is Mala still here?
Yes.
Yes, would you? At least in the poll, too?
We, in a prior meeting, we had looked up the matter of the law that said he did not have to resign, and we said therefore, because he's valuable, we saw a valuable member to our team, we saw no reason why he should. We were not hoping he would. But I can only speak for myself, but I, as Secretary, you know, we unofficially said that.
Yes, and we had, this was in July, so we went for a number of meetings, accepting his vote and so on, so intense. I should also mention that there's some interest on being with the community, which you would express by a hand and a half and continue, because again, this town pool, trained-up, experience is an asset.
The only concern I have is if we do this, then the votes of your meeting, your meeting to become suspect.
Yeah, I don't think that might be. I would like to put this off for a week. And the reason I say is, in our bylaws, I don't know how, what applies to a one cousin of a, but there's a certain points where you, our bylaws, not the general laws, that you could point at outstanding for the expression. But I haven't seen a bylaw for a while, but I'm reading it.
I didn't know.
I asked, I didn't even check it out today. She said she didn't check the bylaws. But it was something in itself, my future is, we can check it out, it's a doable thing, but a lot of these bylaws, they turn constable to the national law, the national law, right?
Well, there's a third possibility I have, I need to say, suggest it, but we can talk to town consul about undoing a resignation. I don't know whether you feel like we spend a week on it, but whether we want to do that or not. Anybody?
Well, I think, as Ed said, if we just research it for a week and then get back to you.
Do the Conservation Commission spend a lot?
I think we should, I think we might verify what we want to.
So what is it we're going to do?
I'm making the recommendation that we heard, we check into our bylaws and make sure there's something that not constable we're assuming here. But we'll also need to have, when we have enough bylaws verified by the town of California and out there, to make sure we're in sync with the national law. That's what we're still here.
Suggestion, we get all the bylaws first.
And then send them up, send it following.
Send it forward to the Consul?
Mm-hmm.
Any claim?
Good night, thank you.
We have this right now. Thank you, Charlie.
Do you need to file a note? Do we need to second that or do we?
No, I think we just take that as.
Is that okay?
All right. We're still waiting for, Tree Warden.
Take some comments, please, in the board session.
Yeah, so, well, yeah, but why don't I read the, well, put the, the problem is, is it's.
It's not open.
Yeah. The timeframe is open, but I would think that he won't be present for it. So why don't we move on to some warrants?
I was going to say.
Well, why don't we do this, why don't we take open time for the public? Does anybody have any suggestions, comments, or anything that's not the double tonight or not going to be dealt with? Go on, I guess, go on to the warrants.
There's no sound coming from people's TVs and my, there's no sound coming out of Jigby, that's what I was trying to report.
Oh, okay, so we're.
You're being recorded.
So our nicest development, the chief, for nothing.
No, it's recorded, it'll be on the website tomorrow.
What?
I've got sound here, but it's not, make it from here to there. I'll check it tomorrow.
Dave will be here in five minutes. Thanks. I've got a payroll warrant, PD 1413A, in the amount of $137,003.53. It's a payroll deduction warrant.
Was it on?
There's actually two of those warrants that were approved at the last meetings but were not signed. They were missed with the signatures.
Oh, they were approved?
They were approved at the last meetings.
So this one was approved, but not signed?
This one's... This one's...
What's happening?
Highway warrant, can't make my sign.
Harry, send it out.
This, Jackie, I think that's, all right. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna step away from that one, because I haven't had a chance to review it, but I don't know whether there may be a conflict there or not.
Thirteen. The only one we can't sign is one forty, one hundred forty-eight thousand.
I have one that Jackie can't sign. And it is payroll P fourteen dash seventeen dash three, in the amount of five hundred eighty-four dollars.
Motion to sign, P fourteen dash seventeen dash three, in the amount of five hundred eighty-four dollars.
Is there a second, please? All in favor?
Aye.
Jackie's abstaining.
No, abstain.
That's that one by you. I have a highway requirement.
Can't keep looking at it.
Warrant. P fourteen seventeen dash two. In the amount of twenty-one thousand, six hundred thirty-eight dollars and twenty-three cents.
Motion to sign, payroll fourteen dash seventeen dash two.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Right.
All right. She may not be, but I'll, I'll stand, won't you do that one?
I just read that one.
You can sign that one, right?
Mm-hmm. One hundred forty-three thousand, nine hundred forty-four thousand, fifteen cents. Uh, I'd make a motion to approve.
Second, I can't. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Abstain.
Aye.
Oh.
Bye. I'm on top of it.
Let me Google on the second, David.
I abstain. I have a regular payroll deduction warrant. P D fourteen dash seventeen, in the amount of forty-two thousand, one hundred seventy-two forty-nine.
Make a motion to sign, payroll deduction fourteen dash seventeen, in the amount of forty-two thousand, one hundred seventy-two dollars and forty-nine cents.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
I'd just like to say that even though there's a lot of stuff on this agenda, it's really nice to see all your faces out there. We're all here for a reason, but it's kinda nice.
I have a bill warrant, fourteen dash sixteen, um, in the amount of two hundred seventy-eight...
I got it, I got it. Thank you.
Two hundred seventy-eight thousand, eight hundred sixty dollars and ninety-one cents. Do I have a motion to...
Motion to sign.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. I can see that's right.
And, yes.
I have something.
Thank you.
Those, the ones that's screwed apart, hold out for David, and you guys sign, and close your, if you can, sir?
Okay.
Is it coming?
I don't know.
I hope it gets going, I'll return to the office. So this is school, right?
Right, right.
What's this one? There's another one in here, Mike.
There's two?
Mm-hmm. This is payroll fourteen dash seventeen, in the amount of seventy-seven thousand, nine hundred ninety-six dollars and thirty-four cents.
P fourteen dash seventeen.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Okay, so this one right here.
Oh, that's back, the bill one. No, it's not, it's not, it's back in documents. Okay. David, how are you? All right, wait till now. Just gotta make sure my machine gets back to the right place.
Keep myself right.
I didn't see this other memo here, there's another, is the select ward aware that on page, there's a page, oh, my machine's not working now, page eight of eighty-nine. This is from John Furman, I somehow missed this one.
Yeah.
Do we all agree that it's David's, Garca's hearing as tree warden?
Mm-hmm, yes.
I seem corrected on my error. Trying to get back to the legal notice, I don't know, let me get, there we go. I'm gonna read the legal notice, please be advised that the Southampton Select Ward and the Tree Warden will hold a tree removal public hearing pursuant to M G L eighty-seven sub three to five to hear any and all parties interested in a public shade tree removal application by, filed by Chester and Susan Kellogg of Ninety Pleasant Street, with regard to a public shade removal at eighty-one Pleasant Street. Proposed public tree shade removal, the proposed total trees to remove are in front of eighty-one Pleasant Street, which include one eight-inch hemlock, one ten-inch hemlock, one eight-inch white oak, one twenty-four-inch white oak, two twelve-inch red oaks, one eight-inch red oak, one forty-eight-inch red oak, one eight-inch red maple. The tree removal is for construction of a roadway proposed for a cluster subdivision called Pleasant View Estates, meeting to be held October twenty-second at six fifty in the town hall meeting room. And who's gonna represent the option?
Mark Reed. I will, uh, my name is Mark Reed for Heritage Surveys, representing Sue and Che Kellogg, who are also present tonight. As the chairman read, as part of the legal ad, the Kelloggs are proposing a ten-lot cluster development located on thirty acres of land that, um, is shown on a set of definitive subdivision plans that is currently under review by the Southampton Planning Board. This is sheet number eight. Excuse me. That is the site grading plan. Pleasant Street being located here. The proposed roadway to serve the ten cluster lots that are further back on the property in itself is shown on the plan. In marked in red are the nine trees that are to be removed. And, uh, the majority of the trees are within the right-of-way, with just a very small portion of the forty-eight-inch oak being within the right-of-way in itself, which is the largest tree. We've worked through the planning process with the board and with the immediate abutters that, um, moved into the house to the north of the project to save, um, this existing tree at the corner of the property, as well as two trees at the corner, and always intended to retain the large oak at the, at the boundary line between the Kelloggs and the Shistas that are shown on the plan in itself. So the trees are needed to be removed and to facilitate public safety and access into the project in itself, and shown on this plan. With that, I can answer any questions that the board may have, or members of the audience?
Mark, can you go with the troops on the, um, voting side of the road?
Sure. Um, through the process, we are proposing that shade trees, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven additional shade trees be planted along the roadway, along parcel one, shown on the plan. And then, in addition to that, from the roadway to the rear of the lawn area that's on parcel one, we have a mixture of sixteen, um, Douglas fir and sixteen hemlock to create a hedge row and buffer between the project in itself and the abutting house to the north, as well as, uh, a guardrail system to shield for headlights, to protect their privacy within that. So we've got a lot of plantings within this area. We also have a fifteen-foot-wide buffer strip being proposed along the boundary line to, um, keep the, some of the existing trees, or all the existing trees within this area, um, that are there now intact for the construction of the roadway. There are three poplar trees that are located in this area, and the poplar trees are, are at the end of their life, um, and probably will either need to be taken down or fall down in a good windstorm that are there, so we're trying to work around that. But, as you know, poplar trees are very soft wood. Uh, when they get to be fifty to sixty feet tall, they, they're at the end of their, their lives, and a good storm, or windstorm will knock them over. So we, we created a large planting buffer within that area in itself.
Yes, sir.
Those, that's eighty-four Pleasant Street, that red block, that's right on Pleasant Street?
Yes.
That's on Pleasant Street.
Correct.
And all the trees are right in there?
Right, the nine, the nine trees are right in this area here. Yeah. Eight of the nine are within the town right-of-way. The big forty-eight-inch, um, is on the Kellogg's property.
It's still public shade tree?
Right, because a very small portion of it, under the definition of the law, even any portion of that tree, whether it be an inch or twenty inches, is considered a shade, public shade tree.
Yes, ma'am?
Um, I'm just, I live on that abutting property, and I just want to acknowledge that the developers have been really very kind in some of the accommodations they've made, to provide some privacy and, like, I assume that's very kind. I'm just wondering, that, that big forty-eight-inch, um, tree, is there any way that can be saved? I mean, I, is there any way that tree can be saved? Because it is over a hundred years old, it's quite healthy, we had a certified artist come out and look, actually, we had a look at the trees on our property, Jason's on our property, and, uh, it's just a fabulous tree. It's one of the biggest trees on Pleasant Street. And I, I just, you know, I'm not an engineer, I understand that, but is there any way to shift that thing a few feet and save that big, beautiful tree? Because a lot of the others are pretty small trees, you could replace pretty easily. That one, you know, maybe your grandchildren might save it, but that would be my only question. Is there any way to save that one big forty-eight-inch tree?
Unfortunately not, um, because of the location of the roadway, it is right within the travel lane when you're entering the site itself. Uh, this town has certain standards for roadway width and radiuses to get in and out of public ways. The, uh, the roadways themselves and the radiuses have to be within the property line, so it doesn't negatively affect either your property or Shista's property to the south of you. So, short of having a one-way street, being fifteen feet wide, um, that'd probably be the only way that that tree would be able to be saved.
And I, John, you're on the planning board, and I assume you tackle this issue?
We have, uh, I'm John Furman, the chairman of the planning board. Uh, we had actually asked, uh, Mark and Heritage to do an alternative road layout, because one of the requests of, of the abutter was that we create, I think it was a fifty-foot buffer along the property line. So we asked Mark to come up with a layout that actually shifted the roadway. Um, and what it does at first, it loses one of the proposed lots, which, um, is an impact financially for the developer, but it ended up not having enough frontage in the front of the roadway law, um, to actually have the roadway be on this property, and then it created an S-turn where the intersection was with the proposed roadway in Pleasant Street. So it just created a number of unsafe conditions. We, we've gone through, I, I think we had actually spent one whole entire meeting, um, on the planning board, just addressing the issues that the two abutters had. We talked about nothing but, uh, the, um, the screening, the grading, the stormwater. So I think, you know, we had actually done, I think, a pretty good job of collaboration to get a development that's gone forward in addressing the needs of the abutter. That tree, I think, you know, it's collateral damage at this point, it's in the middle of the roadway, it has to go. This roadway's gonna go in.
So does that mean there really isn't, like, with those entrance ways, you don't have the footage to shift it over?
Correct, right.
Well, it just isn't there.
It's just not there, and unfortunately, it's just not there.
And then the only other option would be to give up a lot, which has an option.
Even if you give up a building lot, it's still, the town requires that the width of the road be twenty-six feet, so that cars can pass in two directions, and you can have, um, safe entrances in and out of the project, so. Short, short of, um, even losing a building lot won't make a difference. Um, the only way would be to either shift the whole roadway to the north on your, into your property, or shift the whole roadway to the south, which we discussed at the planning board meeting, onto the, the Shista's property. In both cases, that wasn't an option.
Uh, question for tree ward, David, if we shifted that little bit, that tree, we're still gonna damage a, a, a major number of, uh, losing that tree, and it's gonna, uh, sorry, it's lifespan.
Unfortunately, it's a huge tree. Um, you know, everybody likes the large trees, and we had one of the largest maples right up here above the school that came down in a storm. And it broke my heart to see that thing go. You never know if a tree like that could go in a storm. Uh, the other point, I mean, the roots on a tree like that spread way out. There's, there's no way, that road would have to probably come over, and you'd have to take out the other oak. You'd lose that oak, uh, if you moved it over, the other oak. So we're saving that one there, which is a little bit smaller, and unfortunately, that one could go, but I really have to applaud them for how many, they've been very generous. I mean, those trees will never get to that size, but they're really planting some very nice trees, sugar maples and, uh...
And hills.
And hills, along there, that'll be a really nice border to take, you know, some of the, uh, runt of losing the nice trees that we lost there. But, you know, it, my recommendation is, they be taken down as long as the, uh, the road is approved, the project is approved. If it's not approved, then I'm not taking trees down.
Any other, David, do you have any questions?
I don't, no.
I saw another hand over here. Yes, sir.
Hi, I'm, uh, John Gaffoy, so I live at eighty-six East Street here in town, and been out here in town about twenty-seven years, and, uh, I just find Pleasant Street a, a very special place. Uh, I have traversed that street on foot, probably, safe to say, between three and four thousand times, and it's been very therapeutic, I guess, for my wife and myself. It really is such a beautiful, beautiful area. Uh, we just happened by mistake or by accident to see the, uh, notices on all those trees about a week ago, and a little bit crestfallen, that, you know, another chink in the armor, that the development along the street has certainly changed it remarkably, and so be it. I think Mark answered the one question that we had, was, you know, that, that one large tree just cannot be saved, and that's a shame, it's too bad. Uh, that is a, a street of special beauty, uh, and to say that we're disappointed when life goes on, so be it. Uh, I wish there were some other alternative to all this, and thank you for hearing me out.
Do the... Mark? Oh gee, boy, take that out, sir. Um, one, one thing I just wanted to comment on, which really wasn't brought up as part of this meeting, but this subdivision itself is the first cluster subdivision ever being proposed in town. proposed in town, it's been on our zoning bylaws since sixty-two, and the Kellogg's are actually the first ones to ever try it out. So, under the subdivision regulations, they had to submit a design of a standard subdivision, and Mark, how many lots was that?
We had, we had nineteen lots under that one.
Nineteen lots, and under that subdivision, it'd be allowed by right, and a developer could go in there and clear cut that entire property, and there wouldn't be anything we could do to stop it. Under this development, as a cluster subdivision, we do clusters of ten, so they could make two clusters, so we're down to one, so instead of having nineteen lots, we have ten. And then the perimeter of all those lots is a hundred and twenty-five foot of vegetation, which is to remain in its natural state. So this subdivision is, is really, you know, if I had to have a subdivision next to my home, this is what I would want, because it's leaving the perimeter in as much of a natural state as it possibly can. And it just, even, I know we're, we're losing nine trees, but we're saving a lot of trees in the back because of the, the character of which this is being, being put in. So, I'm just, I just want to throw that out, because I know we're here just for those trees for removal, but the subdivision, the content of which is being approved by the planning board, needs to be taken into account too, that this is a one-off at this point.
We have, we have other clusters that are running, we have security. The only other cluster we have is Garrett Court, which is a farmland cluster.
Right.
This, this cluster development is, like John said, is one that has never been used before, because the minimum lot size has to be thirty acres, of which fifteen acres has to be as open space or repainted. And in this case, we have eight over eighteen acres of open space being proposed, and ten building lots on that cold side roadway.
And echoing Chairman Fernand's, is that these are nice because of the open space. We have Garrett Court that has, I don't know how many Christmas trees that grow there every year, and we tried to put other ones in other parts of town, and they don't, it's hard to make them work. So it's a, congratulations to making this work the way it is.
Once you get into the development area, all the building lots are within the existing field area, with only minimal cutting of trees in the rear of the property for stormwater management and the rear of the lots. But I would say probably eighty-five percent of the lots are within the open space, there's a large farm hayfield out there. The remaining open space is going to be, continue to be farmed by the Kellogg's and in perpetuity through the association, to make sure that it stays in homeowners association. Correct.
Yes, sir.
My concern is it's still the destruction of these trees on Pleasant Street. What was in the backwoods? I mean, if they were going to put the nineteen houses in there or the ten houses, they got the same issue, you gotta have a roadway. So those trees are going to go, they're suspect anyway. My concern is that these are more trees being ripped off Pleasant Street.
We don't have that concern.
It won't be the last ones either, more than likely. That's the sad part, I mean, it's just, it's a desirable area, you know.
I built my house on eighty-four Pleasant Street, and we took down one tree, so I could put a driveway in.
But if you go back, if you go back-
I had to rebuild, to replant a tree.
But I think if you go back a couple hundred years, it's always clear cut, I don't-
There's more trees in town now than there were two hundred years ago.
We watched all the stone walls, they were all fields.
You could see from here to the other side, almost down to the hill and the golf course, it's all, but from here on down, we have more trees now than we did then. Anything further?
I have a question.
Yeah.
Can we take those trees that you cut down and reuse them somehow in town, in some of the free field or some of the parks? What are you going to do with the wood?
The wood itself would be firewood. The trees themselves, because they're so close together, really can't be transplanted because of root systems themselves.
No, I'm saying, like, you're probably going to mulch them, or are you going to, you know, use it somewhere else in town, will it benefit?
Well, we're, we're planting new trees within the development itself.
Right.
All right, each one of the ten lots has two shade trees. So there's twenty shade trees within the development itself that are getting planted, as well as these additional seven shade trees along this area here. And the double row of thirty-two hemlocks and fir trees that are being planted. So, so we're, within the, within the project itself, we're taking down nine here, but we're more than compensating that amount of dollars, if we could use the wood to do something with it.
Yeah, that's what I was alluding to, I mean, can we take that wood and put it in the park, or, I don't, I don't know, like chopped up, like a mulcher?
We have, I have probably close to twenty thousand cubic yards of wood chips from three previous storms. All the tree cutting that went on this last year, they, we have, we collected all that stuff.
Okay.
This is, it's a good idea, Jack, we've got a lot.
You've got enough, huh?
And most of these aren't our trees, as I recall, they're, they're Kellogg's, they're not ours. If they were out in the roadway, they'd be ours, but they're not. Yes, David?
Well, if, if they don't mind, maybe the butt, if you guys don't mind, was, there is a fellow in town that has a sawmill, maybe we can make something out of that butt. The tree, it's got, it's not a straight tree, and once you get above the butt, it's basically a power. Maybe we could say that butt, maybe we could do something with that, I'm not sure what, but something for the town, we could-
On a positive note, it's nice to see the planning board working with the residents, I think they have the best interests of the town, we're not looking at a huge development, we're looking at something that they're trying to preserve, that, the Kellogg's are still there, I mean, they're trying to do something that is, that is, you know, appropriate, but still allows them to use their land in the way that they're, they have the rights to use their land.
I just had one question for the ladies that bought your house there, and I know you'd come to us a few, you know, months ago and had some concerns about this, and you're here, and it seems positive, I'm hoping, and wondering if your communications with the other boards and this solution has kind of worked itself out for you guys? Are you happy with the conclusion?
Passed above the eighty-three Pleasant Street, yes. I think, like I said earlier, everybody's trying to work and work very hard, because, you know, this is going to go in. Our biggest concern, as we mentioned earlier, was we just hated to lose those trees, especially that big forty-eight inch tree. And, you know, it was just a concern of ours, was that, that's why we came tonight, because we were happy and pleased with the work that the committee did with us to help change it, and developer, exactly, to change it, which they didn't have to do, but they did, we appreciate that. Thank you.
I think when you hear people talking about losing this big tree that was on Pleasant Street, are we going to be here again next year, and then we're going to be, again and again, it'll be one tree at a time?
Yep.
So then, so then I just made a plea to everybody, including the planning commission, that the first time you see the first draft, that you look at that aspect of it and require alternatives to taking down a tree. There is another entrance to this property, and I really, I'm not an engineer, I don't go with that, that entail, so maybe it's even more disruptive than this would be. But just looking at, you know, going to the edge for these trees a little bit, I'm going to push the commission to do that, and the planning board to really go to the ends of the earth to save some of these trees, because when I read the town plan for Southampton, is that just yes, or are we really going to preserve the rural character? If we really have been preserving, then we're going to take every effort, we're going to look at every possibility, I mean, including on this land, how to get, you know, you know, we had the red at first refusal, that went pretty fast. So really looking at everything, we can do to preserve it, rather than, I mean, it's pretty apparent to everybody here, that tree has to come down and have a viable community back there, so what do you do? But, but if it's going to be this way with every tree, then well, those of us who need trees are going to need them somewhere else, because-
Well, if you talk to Charlie, about, you know, we have preserved, I don't know how many acres since, I've been on the board since two thousand and four, I took a year off, how many acres have we preserved in town?
Yeah, it just can't stop, though, I mean, you know, it just has to go on, and to your point, this won't be the last one that comes down, and I think that's just a good point for all, I think that's just the concern, that eventually it'll look like East Hampton.
No, we'll actually look more-
Find that there's a lot of sidewalking on there.
We'll, we'll actually look more probably like Long Meadow. We're becoming like the Long Meadow of, of the, of this area, it's a bedroom community, we don't have sewage. If we get sewage, it will look like East Hampton.
And I'm not, I'm not sure if this is the right place for this, and if it isn't, I'll submit it somewhere else, but we just had an arborist come out and look at the trees, not related to any of the trees in the red, look at the trees on the, the tree adjacent to our property line, and just make some suggestions about, that you generously agreed to preserve those trees, but suggestions about how to do that in a way that ensures that the tree will continue to live. So I did an email this today, I think, to the planning commission, I think I only sent it to Richard, because I couldn't find the planning board's-
Mr. Garisco would probably like to look at that as well.
Yeah, and I don't have an email, I mean, I-
Is that a copy?
Yeah, it's just a copy of his recommendation.
We'll, we'll take that as evidence during the hearing and, and transfer the data.
I know we were here before, David wasn't sure exactly, but how many feet away, you have to protect the roots, and so we just got, you know, an official opinion on, on the best recommendation, the tree that we are going to preserve there, which we need to save as possible.
We'll take a copy of that, because your email didn't come into the office yet, it may be there now. David, it's your hearing, do you have anything else you want to do?
I, on this point, no I don't. No one wants to take down a nice tree like that. But we have storms that come and take down trees also, by nature, so that's heartbreaking. We see perfectly good trees, that, every storm doesn't take down bad trees or diseased trees. Many of the trees that come down are very healthy trees, because they've got the leaves on them, so to lose one tree, they're going through the whole process, I mean, that's what we have at hearing for, to air this out, everyone knows what's happening, they've gone through all the rules and regulations and-
Are you going, are you going to do the work, or is someone else going to do the work?
The developer will do the work, the Kellogg's will hire someone.
But David's got to authorize that.
I think we have to make sure they have insurance near, you know, if you make, I just got a question for you, gentlemen.
John, when you, with the final pool out there, we had this discussion about protecting those two trees during construction, while putting barriers up along them?
That's going to be one of the conditions that we have. It's one of the conditions that we, we have in there, one of the ones, the oak that's the, the twin leader, the proposed pavement is not any closer than the existing pavement is to the tree. So what we'll last do is just put up an orange fence along there, so that all the disturbance is kept out of that.
I'm just worried about having a piece of equipment hit it, some repressing fuel out there, you know, and just want a perimeter around it that protects it and is maintained, and it's not on our back, it's on the developer's back to make sure it's-
Sure, we can add that as a condition.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm Christine Richastra from Pleasant Street, so I want the town to put up some more trees to replace, you're taking down nine trees, put up nine more trees on Pleasant Street, both sides or either side or somewhere.
The point that's just been made is we're putting in ten or fifteen, how many are the ones right away?
Along here are seven, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, just on this area here, plus thirty-two of the hem, the fir trees and hemlock trees.
That's not Pleasant Street.
No, we found this, it's on the right of way.
Yep.
Which is going to be a public way for the town, essentially. I'm not sure there's room along Pleasant Street necessarily.
There is, but surprisingly, when we, we used to have the policy, when we took a
tree down, we replaced it, you'd be surprised how many people don't want a tree replaced.
I don't want them right now, because I'm raking my weed.
That's, that's-
In the spring, I like it, but in the fall, I dread it. But that's just the least.
That is the way we say it, if it's a good tree, people look at it as a private tree, if it's a bad tree, then it's a damaged tree, so.
Just for the record, if you want to put nine trees on one property across Pleasant Street, you want me to, we'll take them.
David, it's your, it's your hearing, but with your permission, I guess I'd close it for any further comment.
I agree.
And we'll close the public hearing to the shade tree on Pleasant Street. Do we get a copy of that letter? And we'll get David's copy, go time five, and we'll conclude the public hearing in that manner. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
Thinking he's an Aruba?
Yeah.
Must be nice to be there.
Yeah.
Fair enough, fair enough. I just heard it. Three half days.
I make a motion, make a motion to remove the trees that were highlighted in the public hearing shade tree on Pleasant Street.
Six, all in favor?
Aye.
Coming back, something remorseful. We, at seven-ten, we're supposed to do a Red Rock hearing transfer of license.
I wish people would.
I'm going to open the hearing for the transfer of the liquor license. Is it liquor license or other licenses? I got all licenses, all hundred alcohol. I have the check made out to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts for two hundred dollars. The new licensee is Pizza ninety-nine Company Incorporated at the old Red Rock fifteen J College Highway address, and five thousand square foot restaurant and bar with seating for a hundred and sixty-four people, two men's rooms, two ladies' rooms, reception waiting area, four entrance exit doors, kitchen area. The licensee is represented by Attorney William Murray. Business is being sold, but I just skimmed through this. We have managers.
John, are you living here now, or are you still in Pesto?
I live here.
In Southampton?
Roosevelt Street.
Okay, welcome, welcome to town.
And Mr. Damon Nakas, and I work for an Arvenite, so I should be able to say that well, but I can't, this is a hundred percent owner, I have a copy of his pass, passport?
Who was born in Greece, but he's a naturalized United States citizen.
Nineteen seventy-five, if I saw the date.
Right, from Boston.
Corey's been requested. Is there anybody here to speak? Oh, let's go this way, the board have any questions?
How's the pizza? You good?
Excellent.
Excellent.
Did you own a pizza joint in Pesto?
Before, just one.
Did this, I just wonder, when it says the description on the premises, the expansion of the waiting room, the increased size of the kitchen, did all of that already happen?
Yes, there was an expansion from two thousand and nine, doubled the size from twenty-five hundred square feet, nineteen ninety-eight, from twenty-five hundred square feet to five thousand square feet.
So this stuff is already happening, so?
That's all happening, correct.
This is the current footprint of the old Red Rock.
That's correct, nothing's being changed, not a thing.
Okay.
Does anyone in the public wish to speak on this matter? Make a motion to approve, and start the discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations, John.
Thank you.
Want to eat a little more of pizza? Do you enjoy pizza?
I do.
Okay. David, I just, you guys are all the time.
Well, I'm just curious what kind of services can provide the citizens of our town? Free delivery, good to know. Welcome to Southampton.
Thank you. I assume you're the local, like, yeah, not, not the one that's checked.
I just wanted to mark the page for you.
I was going to, the light was almost going to sound like a mark. Come on your way.
It's been requested. Correct.
That was a request for me.
And we've also, this form we get from the Department of Revenue is certificate of its standing that's been requested and that is not a notice, and I'll take it as well. But I decided in the package, can't go to Boston until a couple forms come in.
So we're going to have to keep on a separate issue. We've got to keep the minutes on for the vaccine.
How do you ensure you're going to help with it?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Good luck, John. Michael, do we sign this other red tag?
No, on the other side. No, no. Where you're-
No, but there's two.
There's two, but go across-
We got this one.
Yep, now that one is on the other corner.
Oh, on this other corner, okay. Come on, ladies.
It's your phone. Probably, usually is.
Oh, Courtney, that's fantastic.
On a different topic, how does the board feel? Liz and I were talking about, how do you feel going week-to-week meetings with budget season coming in? Would you rather stay every week?
I think that would be off every other week or every week.
We have been off every other week, and the only reason I bring it up is because, I mean, we were originally supposed to meet with the finance committee tonight, and then all this stuff has come up, and then there's been exchanges about when to meet again, and my feeling is that if we just schedule ourselves every week, it's going to be much easier to cancel a week than it is to sign up, I mean, to have another meeting. And with budget season coming, and I want us to be able to follow up with the communications in the building and a million other things, it just seems like the right thing to do at this point would be go every week.
I would think, I would agree with you, it's become a full, once-a-week job. And then we'll have the occasional vacation when we can cancel a meeting. I think I would suggest that we go to posting every weekend, and it's easier to cancel a meeting than to post it.
So with that being said, may I, I would like to schedule the October 29th for the finance committee to have a large amount of time to talk about the budgets. Instead of November, how about 29th? October 29th, if you're available. You want to stay with the 12th instead? Okay.
So there's no problem if you're a week in.
One of the complaints in the past is if we start talking budgets, that department heads aren't there in the beginning, just to let you know. It's a need that pops up later.
Well, the intention was to send a memo to all of the boards.
I guess, much again, advantage of all the partners who are here, because if they're not here, they don't know the process.
Go it on the ground, roll it downhill. We should have an expectation dates, like by February, by March.
Well, we've done that.
We're going to have a full schedule for it.
So why don't we ask department heads to be here on the 12th?
What time would you like to do it?
Well, since you're probably first on the agenda, why don't we do it right away at 6:30?
At 6:30, at 7:30. What we're going to do is we're going to do a PowerPoint, we're not going to hand out a dozen different sheets.
So 6:30, does that work for you? Do it right at 6:30, since we'll be tying up the most amount of people at that hour and then get them out. And so mostly like an overview of expectations, like sort of projected revenue.
On the same note, when we met with the, we had the meeting last week with the communications end, so all this stuff is on here all the time, and it seemed like when we had that meeting, all this stuff kind of disappeared and they're-
What's this stuff was?
You know, oh, well, hold on. All the, like, two, three, four, five, all the extra stuff, discussion items, policies to be discussed, I would just like to have that stuff on every week.
Okay.
So that if something comes up, or something needs to be signed, or somebody has something, it's not something we can't discuss. So if there's only one thing on the agenda, I'd just prefer to see everything every week so that nothing's passing by.
I would agree with that, but how far do we go with that before we just sort of become obvious that we just sort of circumvent in the open meeting? Just, I mean, is it-
I don't think it's circumventing.
Well, I mean, it's soup to nuts every week, but we never really get to anything more than the salad.
I think that we'll get to more now that we're meeting every week, and that'll be on there, so we'll get to that part.
Yes, ma'am. You won't get cookies, eh?
I have a question about the budget process. We're inviting the school committee members for the Hampshire Regional to our meeting on the 12th after this, and I believe, Liz, you said you want to be the board rep?
I have been going, because I know that you are, Liz.
We want to bring in just for a meeting, our members from Southampton to go over the process, with them and explain how they can help us in the process.
When do you want to meet with them? You want them here then also, at the same time?
Yeah, we're going to meet here for this too, and then meet separately afterwards, if you can spare our-
All right, so they meet on the 30th anyway? So I, okay. And you want them to come?
When Summers is here, is on the air, she's going to send an email before.
Do you want the Norris School Committee here also? Or just the high school?
High school is a critical one, with Norris-
If somebody wanted to come, it wouldn't be a bad idea.
Yeah, it'd be a bad idea.
Okay.
Excuse me, John, do you have a liaison for the finance committee to the school department?
Yep. For the Hampshire Regional, it is at the Summers, and she's going, she goes to the maintenance, she'll be there next week also. And also Francine is to the Norris, so maybe both attend. But we want to get out the upside of the school committee and kind of explain to these folks what they can and can't do to help the town.
Good luck with that.
All right.
Good luck.
I know, but you should try, right?
Anything else, John?
I don't know, I was like, thanks.
Mike, just following his thought, do you ever think about having the finance committees for all the five towns get together and really sort of look at the numbers and be honest with each other about what we really can afford at the region?
We talked about it last cycle, but we haven't talked about it yet. What's a good thing to bring up early in the season is good stuff.
Maybe even just, if you need to make it smaller, just the chairs of the five-town finance meetings getting together and, you know, chew the fat a little bit and see where you guys are all sitting money-wise.
Disharmony comes with the budget process, and the formula that kicks one town up one year and kicks it all the other town up next year or that year.
Divide and conquer.
Or if we can get together and conquer.
Formula to try this, try this. No, it's not, that's what I'm saying, you can't escape that formula, you can say you don't want to, you don't want to do it, but-
We're supposed to have representation because of our, you know, the students, we have more good students. We have more members in all the other towns.
But it's always one town gets the hit, like it seems to be.
If all towns got together and says, the super price index is 5% over the last 12 months, none of us are agreeing to more of an increase than that, that would stop the whole process and put it in our, but why would they do that?
Yeah, and I mean, then we get to the situation where one town is south, the other four towns can lock that town into the, into the formula by passing a budget.
But talking too early is the only chance.
Say your own thing, you got it. Well, I want to bring up the communications meeting from the last time and ask if anybody wants, if there's anything in particular that we want to do or not do as a result of that meeting.
I think that we need to schedule a follow-up meeting and one every month thereafter to keep-
Follow-up meeting of employees?
Yeah, to see how-
Committee members?
Yeah.
Wasn't that many committee members here?
Right. I think everybody, all committees, I think there should be an all, an all-people meeting.
Would there be some sort of action before we have them come in?
All right, Mike, I actually spent some time reflecting upon it, and I tried to listen as much as I could, and I, and, you know, I really got a sense that there was really some disharmony and some, you know, fractions over here, over there, and, you know, even though I had gone, when I was chair, tried to get things to be a little bit differently, and I thought it had some success, but that wasn't really sort of recognized, I think. And this is, again, this is just my gut feeling, I think that the different fractions want, or have a sense that we're supposed to club somebody, or get that person, or whatever. You know, how come that person's doing that, and why aren't they punished? And I don't, I don't think that's our job. I mean, I, you know, I really think that you have to sort of just ask them to, you know, be the change that they would like to see in the town hall, you know, and try to treat each other with respect and move forward. But I don't, I don't think our role is to go around and be the enforcer, or be in the, you know, carrying a club on beating people up. I think our role is to more encourage people to actually perhaps try to get along and work better, to a better work environment, and have better communications between themselves and not better communication with us. I think that's where it lies. That's just one guy's opinion. So I don't even, I don't know how you make an action plan on that. There was no, there's no action plan, but just-
That's where I'm at. What are we going to, what action are we going to take before we call them back and see if something's working?
It's not, I mean, there was no, my gut feeling is that you're not going to feel that anything has changed. And, I mean, you could send out a survey to all the town employees and say, you know, and try to, you know, use, what is that, Survey Monkey or something like that, and probably can find a survey that's so specific to work environment, and send a survey out to all the employees of the town, not only the town hall, and ask them specific questions, and that would give you something to work with. Right now, we were just, you know, it was just more of a session to listen to complaints, but there's really not much I see us doing, other than trying to find out the exact causes for a survey or something like that. And then address those exact causes in some sort of, you know, concrete action if there's a difficulty because people always use email, or they don't use email, they don't, I mean, that would be the way to sort of accomplish.
I think the first thing that we need to do is to take the list that we had made about the items that needed to be addressed, is come up with answers to those questions so that we have them at the next meeting. And chances are, if you have answers to those questions, other problems are going to come up, in which case we'll find answers to, and at a following meeting, we'll give the answers. It might just foster more communication.
I may have listened.
There was the 20 hours a week.
Right.
I think check-in about how the, you know, the bills and the mailboxes are going.
If I had a website.
Oh, wait, I have something on that.
Food permits. And we've made, we've made some changes on the form, I think we went out there, but we didn't go up everybody. We made some changes to the form. Well, I sent you back an email that's-
Mandatory.
Make it mandatory, that they have to go to Board Health before they come to us. And then, and I, and we had someone, I don't remember who brought this one up, the PQB rule for the part-time employee and-
We need to find the answer to that, otherwise it's, how long are we going to let that go?
Right, Eileen, I thought you guys talked about that.
We did.
Well, there's, it's very, there's two different, first of all, you need to look at glossary and find out definitions before you jump into anything. And I think that was some of our problem, that there's a glossary practice. And I do believe there's information in two areas in there, they say different things.
So were they always supposed to, it wasn't interned?
And I believe Mike went to meeting, you guys were going to deal with that shortly, am I right?
Yeah, except they scheduled their next meeting.
My comment on that 20-hour rule, we throw it back to college procedures, Mike hopefully will come up with some kind of resolution that we need to be consistent on these things versus inconsistent.
When's their next meeting? Because it would be nice if they could come present their findings to us.
They don't have a, they're already meeting-
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, tomorrow night.
No, tomorrow.
Tomorrow afternoon, I think it has to do with the fire teams.
So I can't make it-
But they're meeting, and so now that we meet every week, could we ask them to bring those findings to us on Tuesday so that we can move forward with this?
The science? There's a process and a science. The process is you bring PCS, you talk about the PCS?
No, I'm talking about what, so we can come up with who's going to get paid and who's not, what-
Consent from the-
I want them to come tell us, what do they decide?
Back off and say, we have a representative on that, that's why-
He can't go.
What?
He can't go.
Well, then he can deal with the next meeting, he goes to them, okay?
Assuming that they don't have-
Should you resolve there and come up with a recommendation? And, you know, the book has to be looked at and find out why there's two interpretations to eliminate one of them or whatever, and we have to have a hearing to get rid of that. But in the meantime, they need to do that with our, you know, with Mike, Mike should report back to us. If it needs the two groups to get together, I'd say yes, let's go in and do that.
I just don't want to see it pushed off any farther.
Exercise the avenue we have already established, and then bring that in.
Okay.
And I do believe there are some contradictions in that book. I was the first to tell you, I was on that committee for a long time, there are contradictions in that book. There are things that we think we're doing the right thing, but it's just the way it's worded that it's not the right thing, okay? And even lawyers will agree with this, and then the lawyers won't agree with this. But in defense of that book, that book is ancient, you know, I've been an advocate of changing that, I think Mike has been an advocate of having it reviewed, but it's a matter of getting several eight thousand dollars to have it reviewed professionally and brought up to current standards. There's a lot of things that need to be upgraded in that book. That's from, I left a year and a half ago on that committee, so, you know, I don't think it's changed too much. They are working on changes, they have a whole litany of changes, I believe. But we're going back to the list. The website, Reggie, why don't you explain what changes you anticipate on the website?
Actually, on the website, with that Community Innovation Challenge Grant, I'm submitting something as well with the schools, where we can upgrade the town's webpage to the cloud. And with the, I'm thinking, with these changes, it will enable town staff to change their own pages. That way, it's not on one or two people, it's on their own. And then, well, that wasn't the option all the time.
And then food, that one, we-
That one's all set.
Yeah, so why don't you make sure everybody gets the line down? And then PQB, is it rules for part-time?
I'm sorry, Mike, on that one, I did send something already to town council about that, but I was waiting for a report from Donna, which I got later, I got later in the day today.
We've had some emails back and forth to Joe Bear about the 18-hour, so that one's being, something's being done on.
Well, we already did that before, Mike. We did that, we did that about four years ago, just-
But we need to, we need to resolve it correctly.
I know, I know, but it's a one-way email. No, we went four years ago about, about how you track it and how people, we were talking about, I think Batchell was on the board at the time, and I was trying to figure out how the hell you're going to track that, if somebody's only working 20 hours this week, and then next week they work 21, they get health insurance, and then they work 17-
I believe it was defined that has to be an average of 20 hours of over 52-week period.
Regular schedule, yep.
But it-
Yes, regular, regular-
But there was, there was already, there's a documented couple on page, it's somewhere over here, that states that.
But we're trying to clarify that one, that there is one getting benefits now, I think, one?
And there only is one employee that is receiving these benefits on, with the number of 20, we do have a number of people working under 20 that are not receiving those benefits.
Was there a mistake made? Was there a mistake made?
And this, we're trying to-
Should own up to it, whether it's our mistake or something else, and that lot happened.
I don't know how, I don't know who or how that person got the benefits for 18.
That person said that she was approached by-
But that's for 18 hours.
Correct.
We, there are some emails going back and forth.
That person shouldn't have the benefits, that letter's already been determined by a couple of-
I would say that you're probably right, but I think we're trying to get a better legal definition to promote.
But I'm just saying, I just, I go, you know-
I know.
We do the same thing a couple, every couple of years.
It's ingrained in my memory of a history, we talked about this 18 hours, and if you were under 18, you weren't getting anything.
Right.
Which is why a number of positions we filled with 18-hour people.
Exactly, benchmark was 20, 20, 20 or 18, whatever. But I mean, I'm waiting for the tire dump to come back up sometime.
Hey, just recite it, yes, ma'am. Oh, I'm sorry.
I just want to clarify that health benefits are not being received by anyone that's working less than 20 hours.
What we're talking about is one, one employee receiving some, you get vacation and sick time?
It was vacation.
Vacation. So.
But not health benefits, I just want to clarify.
No, that's not.
Thank you.
All right, so can I ask a question? Is it one instance or multiple instances?
To date, it was one instance.
What are we talking about, one employee or one incident or one time?
One, one week of vacation.
Actually, it was more than that, there was personal and sick and holiday. When I was going through the payrolls, I documented it.
All right, well, it's times, we'll have to look at it, but that's what we're talking about, one employee and time-
Sorry, I was not, but the thing that I pulled up did not show any sick time or personal times, it just showed vacation, so that's-
So it's a week of vacation. So it's a week of vacation, or something more than that? It's at least a week of vacation.
It's benefits that no one else has that many hours a week gets.
Right, and it was my understanding, and this wasn't in the person's file, that PPP board approved it. So, you know, I don't-
We're digging into it. All right, so, we're making progress on those?
Can, can I, can I throw one more thing out there? On that note, Donna's right, the Personnel Board also approved for that particular person to carry forward one week's vacation from FY thirteen, for, into FY fourteen, and that person never had it. So that's another item to look into.
Should not have had it.
Correct. But they approved a one-week vacation as well.
We approved it.
The Personnel Board, not the Slack Board.
Doesn't that even come to us? It hasn't come to us. So technically, the one week is not gonna, should not, we, we can stop it right here by not approving it, if we so choose.
We get it.
If we get it, we can get it, right?
No, we didn't get anything yet.
How does that happen, that we don't get it?
It was in their minutes, I don't know.
Does the person does payroll, they're on the PQB?
But we've got, you, you asked for a week, not speaking on parent, didn't you ask for a week?
No.
And we, it came to us to vote on.
Right.
She's still learning, asked for a week, and it came to us to vote on. And Joe Slattery-
But you know, I'm going back to, you know, I'm not, I don't wanna make this any worse than this. We all have department heads. The department heads should be signing off, and then before it goes to anybody.
Right.
And nobody, you know, in my department, I have to sign off, whether I agree with it or not, before it goes to the next step. And every department head should be doing that.
For what department?
For, for vacation, holidays, sick time, more caring for the weekly.
What department is this person working in?
Board of Health and Building Inspector.
All right, who's signing up on that?
I believe Art Lauren, or, no, Art, Ron Lauren is the chairperson, and Rich is the department head.
We're moving-
Maybe could ask someone to come by and explain to us, how this is going?
Well, I think, we have some communications with Tom Attorney, I think we should finish that up before-
I think if you put him out here in the chair, and you ask him, I think he'll probably get a better answer.
I, I don't disagree with you, but before we do that, I think we should know where we're gonna go with it.
Okay.
The only reason I'm saying is that our protocols, and why we need to be bypassed as well.
Well, that's why we'd like to have him sit here and explain that to us.
All right, so, does anybody want, anybody wanna do anything else on those three, or, so?
So I talked to the superintendent today about the grant and our issues with the website, and so he wanted to make sure that we talked about some of the things that can be included in that grant, and that we submit some information to him. So, the stuff that Jackie's working on with Officer Illingsworth, and, can you tell me the name of it again?
Uh, the CCAP program.
Totally fits in with his, with this grant. So it's something that we need to talk about, and the scanning barcode that-
QR code.
That would work on it, so this grant is available, anything that will enhance the safety of-
That's a CIC.
Yeah, and so the Norris had, we recently had our website upgraded, and so each department is able to access their page. So I can now upload my own menu and keep things up to date, each classroom teacher can update their own webpage, and I think that having something about that go to him would be really beneficial for us, because then each department would be able to, the Finance Committee could have a page, the Town Accountant could have a page, the Treasurer could have a page, and each person would be in charge of, and, of that, and keeping it updated.
I think that's already, you're talking about the one we're-
Yes, so-
I already sent Craig, just like a brief synopsis of what, what we're thinking of.
Yep, so I just don't wanna miss the ball on this, 'cause it seems like it could really, really help the town at this point.
We're not gonna miss the ball on this one, 'cause Mrs. Fee wants pounding it out.
(laughing) Well, that's positive.
What are you supposed to say and think about the survey, just to go?
I was gonna come back to that, I, I don't know whether, I, I'm kind of leaning towards that's good idea, who's, who's gonna design it.
Lunch lady. And this Survey Monkey, this, uh-
I know what it is.
Okay, so that's what I do, I knew she would know what it is.
But I think the guy that comes up with the idea-
I think that's the person that should facilitate the project.
Very good. I'm just the idea guy.
So you get a whole bunch of ideas together and bring it back to us on October twenty-nine?
I just did, that was the big idea.
Get all of your, okay, so get some questions.
Lunch lady's tough, you know?
I think that you should get a bunch of-
She's been assigned sitting already, she said I had to sit here.
I think that you should get a bunch of questions.
Did you see how she cancels food fights?
We don't have food fights.
There you go.
There you go.
I think that you should get some questions together and bring them to us on the twenty-ninth for us to discuss.
No, I think there's, there's a way to use the online survey, I think that's what we should use.
All right, so you're gonna do something about that?
I'll do something about that.
So, Leonard, did you put on for the next time, for the can escape? Maybe he's gonna come back with a survey question.
Okay.
Everybody's in.
All right, um, where was it?
The COA grant, did you sign off on that one?
We voted, I thought, the last time. Didn't we, did we send a letter?
The State Council on Aging state grant? There's an application?
Oh, oh, that, no, the Council on Aging, Council on Aging grant.
But, oh, something else I found we were gonna mention.
Date, oh, date for special time meeting, but we don't have a date, we don't even need it.
I thought of all that, um-
We don't even need it, unless there's a name.
We have no free cash, we can't, without, you have, right?
No, we haven't, we actually don't have a meeting yet.
Okay.
But I, I, that's another one of those we probably should keep on the agenda in case it comes up on a quick.
What about the, considering an outside agency to process?
Oh, that's what I was gonna come back to. I'm just, thank you, I was going, that's the one I was trying to remember to come back to. And this stems from discussions we had previously, which are somewhat confidential, but we put this on the agenda so that if we wanted to do it, we could, we'd have to do it in open session, we couldn't do this in executive session. So the question becomes, do we want to do this?
My argument to do it is, is the following.
What, before you do that, you saw the letter that, what letter?
From Mr. Palermo. Yeah, it's not in your packets tonight.
It was in your email, it was-
It's my fault. I need, I would like to have a copy of it.
Oh, you got it?
Yeah, why don't you get yours?
But I just, I mean, I haven't read the letter, and, but I'm just, without reading the letter-
No, no, but I just wanna make sure that you get, you consider the full thing.
When, when we were talking about doing this, I mean, you know, I don't think the system we have is flawed, I don't think the, the committee we have together, or the individuals on the committee are flawed, I think they're, it's recommend, it's, it's remarkable that they would come forward and volunteer their time for this, and I think it speaks of the greatness of our town, to have these individuals that do step forward to do these things. But sometimes when I, when I look at problems, I try to look at answers that last more than a year, or two, or three, or four, or ten. And my concern is, is that, you know, during this process, it's been so prolonged, and we've had the misfire with the first applicant, and, and whatnot, that maybe five years from now, it would, might have been a better option to have gone outside the town and sort of said, you know, there are some politics at play within the town hall, and maybe it was the best thing for the town to actually go outside, and actually just have a firm come in, and go through the applicants, and screen the applicants, and, and then present three possible candidates for town administrator to the Board of Selectment, therefore vetting the fact that it was an outside agency doing the process. And, you know, and if anyone would complain that there was politics involved, or, or whatever, that we'd have less footing to say that, because it would be an outside agency doing that. So that's one of the reasons to do it. The other one is, is to, to then, the individual that we do choose will then have had an outside agency actually recommend them, and then perhaps would not have as much of the latency baggage that will come along with this person, because it took so long, and maybe would allow them to function at a better level than if somebody had to sort of struggle through through what we've had to do in the past. And that's the only reason I'm recommending it, and I think it would just give the new person, you know, a stamp of approval from outside, by a professional committee, and sort of take some of the small-town politics out of, out of the search. Again, this is not to take anything away from the members on the committee that have done a great job on the first round ago, and what they're doing now. So that's just my opinion.
Anybody else?
I would wholeheartedly disagree that this hiring committee needs to be sent anywhere else but where it is right now. I wasn't on the committee the first time around, and I, I do think that the way the committee was formed at that point could have been done differently. I think the way that the hiring committee for the fire chief was established is a great way to, to do it going forward. However-
Dave, I'm sorry.
If you, if you send this to an outside agency, A, we're starting all over again.
We're not with the letter.
I just gave them mine.
Oh.
I just wanna read it in a minute. You're starting all over again, so this has been a prolonged process, that will make it even longer. B, I think that the committee has looked at the applications and done so with open eyes and a clear head, and honesty. I think that if you send it to an outside agency, it's going to cost us money that we don't have. And I don't think it's the right thing to do. I don't think, I mean, I, I think whoever that agency is, is gonna look at those applicants, and they're just gonna look at the applicant, they're gonna look at the resumes, and I don't think that they're gonna, I don't know, care so much about the people as the committee that is hiring them and looking at them does now. I don't, I just don't, I don't think it's the right thing to do, and I would like to read the letter from Mr. Palermo, because I think it really sums up at least my feelings about it, and I think it would be helpful, so-
You want, you want to read it into the record, what are you saying?
Yes. Can I do that?
Uh, you certainly can read it into the record if you wish. I don't see any, like, any other stop.
So, it says, Dear Members, the agenda of the, for the October twenty-second, twenty-second, two thousand and thirteen meeting of the Board of Selectmen includes a discussion of whether the town should hire an outside firm to conduct the selection process for the town administrator's position. As I'm not available to attend that meeting, I'm submitting this letter to state my opposition to such a course of action. Selection of an outside firm would result in unwarranted further delay. As a member of the Ex-Ent Town Administrator Screening Committee, I am aware that the significant progress has been made in the preliminary review of the twenty-four applications for the position that has, have, for the position that have been received as a result of the most recent job posting. Members of the screening committee have pledged to complete their work as quickly as possible in order to avoid additional delay in what has been an inordinately prolonged process. Hiring an outside firm at this time would entail search for, selection and vetting of the vendor, which may require competitive bidding procedure, all of which will needlessly prolong the current state of uncertainty in town government. The cost, the cost of employing an outside firm may cause additional financial strain on the town. Southampton appears to be running on fumes with our financial resources stretched to the limit while important current needs, for example, fire hoses and replacement police cruisers are held in abeyance, and future projects like the public safety complex are waiting in the wings. Accordingly, it appears to be less than prudent to appropriate perhaps thousands of dollars for services that are not essential to the town. In this regard, an outside contractor would most likely re-post the position, screen the applicants, and recommend three candidates to the select board, which will make the final hearing decision, all of which functions are currently being performed by the select, selection committee, and which have been successfully performed by prior screening committees. Thus, there is cause to question whether paying an outside contractor to perform this role will constitute sufficient value to the town to warrant the cost that such a course of action would incur. The current process is open to scrutiny. The process for screening applicants by the screening committee is designed to ensure that decisions are based on objective criteria and thus open to scrutiny by the Board of Selectmen, or by any other means the Board of Selectmen may decide to employ, such as a citizen review committee, without any additional cost to the town. In addition, after the screening committee has made and explained its recommendations to the Board of Selectmen, that body has the right to accept or reject the screening committee's recommendations, and also has the right to decide on its own initiative whether to interview additional candidates, all in meetings open to the public. Thus, employing an outside firm appears to serve no purpose. For all the reasons set forth above, I recommend that the Board of Selectmen decide not to hire an outside firm for the selection of a town administrator. In addition, if the Board of Selectmen deems it appropriate to do so, I recommend that at the October twenty-second meeting, it amend its charge to the screening committee to include the above suggestions procedures for oversight. Very truly yours, James Palermo.
Chuck, do you have anything?
Well, I believe that Mr. Palermo is very intelligent, and I believe, I, I think he's absolutely right, but the reality is that we received a complaint, and that as a board, we have to, we have to acknowledge that, and I feel everything that David said makes perfect sense, and whether, rather than reiterate everything he's just said, I believe that an outside agency would be helpful in making the process fair and transparent.
And I agree with David, except that we're so far down the process.
Yeah, that's the other problem.
I, I normally agree that we would be better off and take the politics out of it, but we're so far down the road, I think it's hard to come back.
Wouldn't you get a chance?
And, and that's the long and short of my statement. Maybe a year ago, or a year and a half ago, that would've been a better choice of action, but we're down the other road, and we've got a little bit of dive with what we got. Yes, John?
Just, big on the opinion of Chair of the committee, a couple of comments. One, one is that the process where it is now, we met last week, and we've whittled down from twenty-four to eight possibilities, having notified on the next meeting is tomorrow, which internally would contact people for, for an interview before we made it public. So we've got eight, eight possibilities there, which, which I think is good. And all the committee members of this committee have said that, you know, they're, they're not looking at internal, external, whatever, they're looking at the best possible candidates. And Jim lives on the other, they're two new members, so they can, they can verify that. So I, I think whoever we come up with is gonna be the best three for the town. Whether somebody agrees or disagrees with it, I, I think that's the whole thing. I mean, everybody's gonna have their own opinion, but, but I think there's gonna be the three best ones put in front of you, it'll be background checked, and you guys can decide if you don't like it, if you do like it, and that'll, all that whole process will be done next month, so we'll have somebody in front of you next month. And, and just from a, a cost point of view, where I work at the university, we, we hire search companies all the time, and I, I just pulled off our contract, and search companies charge between thirty and thirty-five percent of the first year's wages, plus roughly twelve 12% administrative charges for everything else. So we're looking at $25,000 to $30,000. Last time we did that, I believe it was for a fire chief a while back, and we had three candidates lined up. The search committee said candidate number eight is the person to go with. Select board said, nah, we want B.
And I made that decision. I'm gonna just put that to bed.
No, I'm just gonna say...
Just to put that to bed so the record's forever, forever, forever. It was a choice between the devil we knew and the devil we didn't know, okay? And we chose the one we knew.
And I understand hindsight's often better, but...
But I knew details of devil was going up because when you actually talked to the candidate that was proposed, you talked to his boss, you talked to other people, there were other issues.
The example...
But I just want to bury that because it keeps coming up.
The example was because of the money, so maybe next time we'll...
Okay, yeah. MRI was about 20, 25 grand to do that.
25 grand, yeah, exactly. So that's how we are. But we'll have, we'll have candidates before you vote next month.
And just to follow on what John's saying, if we have candidates next month and this is still an issue, then we can make that decision next month or the month after, go to an independent agency. We're now satisfied with what comes out of the committee. But at this point in time, I think we'd be best, in my opinion, we'd be best to hear from the committee before we make any further decision.
Mr. Chair, could I have Selectmen Collie's opinion?
At least Collie's free to comment.
I'll have a comment. And my comment is not in favor of hiring outside firms. I served on the current committee as well as the past committee as far as, well, I looked at things, I looked at the best candidate. And John, you were on my committee, we didn't streamline this. Some people did, some people had opinions. And stuck to those opinions all the way through and didn't want to deviate no matter what happened. We looked at the best candidate and we, I thought we brought the best candidate in. And I believe the process is that way. The rest go ahead and spend this kind of money we don't have to come up with very similar results. I don't think they're gonna be much different than what we have based on the pool of candidates we have. I'm not in favor of doing this. I'm not in favor of doing this for the highway superintendent's position either. I don't know how that got on there because we've already decided what we're gonna do on that unless it's changed again.
So do you think, do you think the, in, just from a general opinion, do you think you were, that the committee was fair and honest the first time around? Do you think it was, it was...
I know, I was fair and honest and was straightforward in my, in my comments. And our comments were all done in public at a public hearing and it was, we invaded our views.
It was a public vote as well? It wasn't...
It was public and some people chose to show up, some people didn't.
Okay.
Okay. It was an open forum, it was not a private forum as people seem to think just because they need to go...
So anybody can go to these?
Anybody can go into these meetings and...
And it's posted somewhere?
We're posting it around...
Yep. And can people from the audience make a comment or ask a question, do you think?
At a proper time, yeah. Proper time, sure.
Okay.
And we've, we've entertained, what, two or three people through the whole process that were in the audience? That was it? It's, yeah. We'd love to have more people there asking questions.
So would you say in a general, Mr. Chairman, that it's, it's, you would stick with...
Well, we could not be up to me, but if someone wanted to make a motion, this is the time to make the motion on going outside or not going outside.
I'd like to make a motion.
Make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to stay with the committee that we have and, and I believe in this committee. And that's part of my motion, that I do believe in this committee being fair and doing the right thing for the town and not have a second or other agenda, that it's a fair committee doing the right thing for the town.
Second.
I was gonna say, for purposes of motion, why don't you just...
I just wanted to emphasize in fair and right for the town.
I don't know whether that's a correct motion, but we'll accept the motion. There's a second, Hall in favor. Any further discussion? Hearing on Hall in Favor?
Aye.
And any nay? Hearing on... Oh, I'm sorry, cut you off. Jackie, is there any abstentions?
And I, and I say that I believe this committee, it's not that, you know, it's just, just want it to be, you know, fair. That's all.
Mike, we talked about the highway superintendent's position that we moved to this now. Thank you.
Oh, okay. Where are you going?
I don't know. We talked about having a outside firm to the highway superintendent. As far as I know, four weeks ago, we had a meeting here and it was determined by the Board as a whole that we advertised the position that myself and, tell me if I'm wrong, that myself, and Liz would evaluate the position and give the top three candidates to the Board and see what...
Is that the Board's member?
I think that we had talked about screening the applicants, but that we wanted to have other people involved, which is why...
Yeah, what about...
Which is why we had asked for some letters of interest from people and so...
Did we, then the question is, did we post for...
We're talking highway now.
Highway.
Highway superintendent.
We didn't post for our highway screening committee, but...
Why don't we make, someone make a motion now to post for highway screening?
So moved. But can I just ask John a quick question?
You got a motion on the table?
I said, just so moved, yes.
All right, so is there a second?
Second.
Now, any discussion?
What I was asking is if you do have a committee that's semi-formed, okay, or formed, I mean, would it be...
You want to make, put John in the ad hoc personnel committee?
I'm just saying, just... Pete's a living crap. I don't think that you should use a current committee because given the job description that has, I think there are some people who would have a much better grasp on what that entails and what things on a resume actually mean and mean to the job, I think that we need to form a new committee.
So we want to, do we want to make them, so what was your motion?
To post for applicants for the committee.
All right, so there's a...
Committee is what, 5-7?
Do I comment?
Yeah.
I agree, I know what you're saying because you gotta have people who know about positions.
Some experience.
I don't know if people know, but the committee, especially the chair, puts a awful lot of time and so you need somebody who can do that. Not taking time off and work to do this stuff because it takes so long and gathering. So I think whoever is on this committee, they need to know the kind of time they need.
What about somebody that's like retired, semi-retired?
Well, maybe works in the construction industry.
I think it would be great if Ed was on the committee. I mean...
I mean, I prefer not to be on the committee because I'll be unknown. But there was nobody here to go on the committee and that was back maybe 45, 50 days ago and I was hoping to get somebody here to at least augment me for at least a week or, I mean, a month or two on here, but it doesn't look that way because this is procrastinated out of, I don't know what.
We'll post it and, so how many members of the board?
How many, how many, we'll take whatever applications we are, but how many, do you want to put on the committee?
Five.
Done.
Go ahead.
Can I make a comment here? It's likely, I believe, the fire chiefs committee in the same here. If you have five people, because people are saying you gotta have citizens on it, we're all citizens, so that's not an issue. But if you have five people, six people who don't know anything about the highway and how it goes, you're gonna have a popularity vote. You're gonna get somebody like them in conduction out there who has no clue. And my understanding from the fire chiefs committee, they had two or three people who really hope the rest of that group know what a fire chief should do. Otherwise, I mean, I wouldn't want to be on that committee because I really don't know. Highway committee, maybe, but you know what I'm saying? Unless you have the people who know that job, you're gonna be, you have somebody that's not qualified.
Hopefully we'll get a...
So Ed would be a great person, in my opinion.
Right, but hopefully we get an engineer, indoor head, or someone in the building trade that would...
But don't take the first five to the door.
No, 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 no.
No, 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 no.
That's not the intention.
No, and I think that there are two, already two letters of interest.
All right, so could I ever take a vote on that if I did Hall in Favor?
Aye. So where are we with the posting of the job and what's going on with that?
I didn't get to reach out to Robin in time, so I'm not sure. Maybe tomorrow. I don't know, nobody's contacted.
I thought it was supposed to be posted last month.
It's gotta go through the channels, it's gotta go through the personal board. That's what the personal requisition form says.
I got this. This is too long, too, over a year notice and it's coming at this point? Sorry, I'll see you tomorrow.
What's the last committee that needs to go to? Needs to go to the PP?
The Personnel Board, then the Finance Committee.
So can we just grab John? John, can you grab him and ask him if he's, because you're just asking him to come in here?
And for the record, I've been trying to present that to the board for quite some time, who has been delaying it, so for the record, if I may say.
I just want to know if it's gotten to the Finance Committee? If that's the next step, then...
I thought we took a vote to post it last, like, last month.
You did, but it still has to go through the proper process. The process is, it has to go to the Personnel Board, to the Finance Committee, and then I get it back and then we post it. I'm staying consistent.
Wow.
Do you want it?
Yes.
Did you get the PCF for the entire department?
What was it said?
We voted on it last month or so.
Yep.
Is it Personnel that...
Personnel has it.
All right, I don't know how I can...
I don't know, I need to...
All right, so now, Richard?
I know, is it a...
Do you want to see it for the board?
It's on the form. I know, I know what you're saying, but it's on the form. I'm just doing what the job is.
Yeah.
Oh, no, we have to see it.
All right, so we need to get that posted. I was under the impression it was posted also, but...
So what's the delay? Okay, so specifically, what does policy have to do with the posting?
They have to sign it.
Because it's a job description that has been changed. It's the process.
Is there a meeting coming up tomorrow?
Yeah.
Yes.
Well, can't somebody to the board, he'll rep and bring it there and give them?
Register you go to the board, to the policies and get the thing signed and get it back to us, period.
Because I can't do that tomorrow for...
Oh, I got medics.
So, all right, I'll ask you...
I've asked them, you know...
Well, I'll ask you, go again, you and I'll talk about it.
Okay.
Talk to them tomorrow.
Okay.
I've got a court tomorrow.
Thanks. Yeah, sorry, thank you.
All right, we have the state formula grant for the council on aging. I think that's been on this whole agenda.
Yes.
And we need to sign that and this is a routine grant that keeps them funded for the year.
For every year we get money and I think the dollar amount should be on there and we sign it and glue it.
And I don't, good, thank you. And the, the $24,000, $29,000, forty-nine cents. Can I have a motion to sign the grant?
Make a motion to sign the, the...
State formula grant for the council?
State formula grant for the council on aging.
Should we have two people? Yes, can I have a second?
Second.
Hall in Favor?
Aye.
Aye. You don't have to fill in, fill in the rest of this. It only requires the board chair. Did I complete the agenda? Did I complete the agenda?
Yeah, I think, I'm just checking.
On the highway thing, why don't you drop the advertisement?
I already have it. Everything's all ready.
Send it out.
Okay.
Send it out.
Did you guys sign the marks already?
Yes, you need, there's one you need to sign, you're sure to sign it. Anything further? Hearing on, I take a motion to adjourn.
I'm going to adjourn. Is that done?
Thank you all for attending.
How is it all? You have to actually go to court tomorrow.